hoping to do with our American Rescue Plan funding is upgrade this room's audio visual capabilities. Well, that's the. Anyway, so then we have overlay districts and then the last one that we not have any or districts allowed by the charter. And those are typically, those are typically done by act of general assembly to give local legislation authority. Okay, so I mentioned this already about the verification, the conditional zoning is a rezoning follows the same process as any other rezoning would. Application comes in the door, we review it, we get it to you all at the next meeting with the recommendation. You just you discussed it, make a recommendation, put on council. Very, very similar process to this and we'll get to a little bit of a twist in it later on in the presentation. And conditional districts allow a property owner to set up a district that's only specific to their property or a group of properties that they own. Or properties that everyone's in agreement and the town, so there are specific conditions that have to be agreed upon by both parties. It's not, it's not going from one district to another where you get what you get based on the district. It's each party has to agree to the specific conditions, which will end up in an ordinance. Once the digital district is created. And so before we get into the nuts and bolts of it, I just wanted to give an example of what this would look like. This is an example of a project that I've referred a couple of years ago. In the drawing you see there is a conceptual drawing, there's no real dimensions on it. It doesn't say how deep the parking stalls are or the height of the building. It's showing a general layout of the site and what its intended uses are, in this case was multifamily. And now on the right side of the screen, you've got a. An excerpt of the conditional zoning district ordinance itself that lays out the conditions for that district. So remember, these are all gonna, there's gonna be standalone ordinances independent of the regular zoning regulations. And so each one have its own specific set of conditions with its own set of uses. And any other changes that both parties agree to, such as building size or number of parking spaces. Those sorts of things. So I want, I want to give this visual to give you some bearing when we get into the actual discussion of the text. So the purpose of conditional zoning districts are to minimize the impacts to the community, specifically the neighborhood in which the development is located. But also maximize the development potential. We all know that that the zoning ordinance is not perfect, no one is, nor will be. You do the best you can and you make changes as you go. And so the purpose of this is to tailor development regulations to a specific property. That makes sure that it fits in well with the community, any potential impacts are mitigated through design. And that allows you to maximize the development of a particular site and in those river considering our. Existing restrictions on land with watershed regulations and things of that nature, we really have to make the possible cap. And that's why this would be a good fit here. An important note at the bottom of the slide, this is not intended to relieve hardships that should be resolved, that means in the variance. We'll get into more of that in just a moment, but these are standalone zoning codes. Tailored to a district and they're not intended to be a way around the variance because with additional zoning, you don't have to prove a hardship. It's purely a legislative decision, does not have to prove a hardship. It's also designed to help facilitate development on unique sites. Areas that might have steep slopes that are not really great for development areas that might have floodplain, you want to be able to fit something in. But there's a uniqueness of the property that you just can't avoid. It's also set up to allow for more innovative designs. Towns codes are pretty basic, which is certain town very well for a long time, but if someone comes in, that is, is not something that we've seen before. Not something the town has ever approved. It might be a candidate for initial some interest depending upon the size and the scale of it. And then again, to offset any potential negative impacts to the neighborhood, it's more flexible. That's really the key, I think, that beat the interest of some of the council is that it allows you to develop a standard. Or property that both parties agree upon and it gets rid of any uncertainty about what might happen in the future. And it's legally binding, it's a zoning. So one of the things that I mentioned in the staff report and in the text amendment language, you'll see highlighted is. One of the things that's really important is to make sure that only qualifying projects are able to utilize this tool. What we don't want to have happen is everybody with a behavior law come into the town and say, I want to. I want to put, you know, 15 units on this property and I'm going to go through your conditional district to make that happen. So there needs to be some basics measurable criteria that we can use. To say you have to go through the normal process or you qualify for this special process. And some examples of that are lot size, building area, square footage. And then mixing of uses through, there is some contemplation of mixed use development in town's code. It's not fantastic, it needs a little bit of tweaking, so it's very difficult when you need with some of the larger developers. Who said they want to mix residential and retail and commercial, it's just probably a good tip for them because right now. And then anything else that would qualify legally, these are just ones I'm like and I came up with over the last couple of weeks. But we can certainly talk about others if something comes to mind as we go through this. Any questions so far? So this is probably very difficult to see. We came up with a couple of different scenarios, one of them is, and these are going back from qualifications for a property. One being lot size. And I mentioned that one acre, this map shows three acre, five acre and ten acre and above parcels. So everything you see there that is pink are properties that are three acres in size or larger. And you can see it covers a great deal of town. Fun fact, what's the average size of these properties in those river, anybody know? Any guesses?
I grew by four acres.
Eight acres. Know what it is countywide? Three acres. Average size of the parcel. Anyway.
You're leveling that a little bit.
So we looked at three, five and 10 acres, now these can be two, four and six, they can be one, 10 and five. I mean, it's really up to the board's pleasure, we did a very rough land use analysis to see where this would impact the community. So everything in pink is three acres or larger. I highlighted a couple of areas that I want you to just pay attention to as we go through. So we're going from three acres now we're five acres and the more white you see, the more properties are not able to take advantage of it. And so I highlighted those areas in particular because they're the poor part of town and then they're also along the corridor. And those are the areas that could have the greatest potential impact on experience and. Comfort of a citizen in those river. And then if you look at parcels that are only 10 acres and above. You restrict it even further to really just the larger lots that we have in town, which we have a fair number of. But you can see there's a lot more white, meaning a lot more properties disqualified from being able to use that. Lot size as a qualifier, but I still might have a building size that would qualify them to go through the process, but on lot size. The larger the lot, the fewer properties can use this tool. So again, with the standalone zoning district, you'd have to outline everything that you'd have to outline in the regular zone district. So for those are related use, the standards are everything's allowed except these four things. There's no setbacks for residents, there's other setbacks for commercial, there's parking standards, those sorts of things. So in a conditional district, the both parties would actually outline what those standards are going to be for that site. And they could be varying uses that might not otherwise be allowed. For example, if you're starting with an industrial property, it's going to allow very specific industrial uses with some other uses mixed in. But let's say you have a small industrial property, a couple of acres. And you don't really need to be able to use everything in that, every use in that district, but you want some other ones that come from other districts. You can kind of blend the two and come up with a new district that would apply us to that property. You can look at lot sizes as a, as an option for consideration, density, building height, basically any. Development center you have otherwise with the exception of a queue that are required, well, then to do in just a moment. And the ordinance is written such that if a property comes through. Or a conditional zoning district and it doesn't address things like parking. Then the underlying district would apply, so if you have a property zone industrial. And you want a conditional rezoning for something else, but you don't want it as parking, then industrial parking standards would apply to that site. So it's not specifically called out as a change, then the underlying district would apply. So those are optional conditions. Some things that cannot be varied, so to speak, through this process will be watershed regulations or more regulations. Surface water protection, those things, I want to drop buffers and. Stream crossings, coves, those sorts of things. And then the airport is another example, we don't have any authority over the airport. They don't have real true development authorities, so to speak, approval process in town, but they do have to. Review projects if they have any standards and then they provide a. Feedback to the town. And there are other requirements, I'm sure that are out there that just didn't come to mind during this presentation. Those are the kind of things that regardless of the underlying district, of the development type. That we have to maintain, because those are either state or federal requirements. So there's a couple of options that NAPACAN can go through to make this happen. And this is not laid out in the ordinance yet, this is something that we discussed that we can add to this. Basically, there would be two options, one would be to go through and get a preliminary plan approved by the town council. You establish the zoning district and then you come back later with the final master plan for approval. And the other option would be to start with the final master plan and go through the normal process. Again, that would mean applications, staff review, planning board review, town council, this is any other rezoning would. But at the end of the process, you can go right to construction as opposed to having to come back at a later date with construction plans. And I'll elaborate that in just a moment, this is, that's difficult to see for me. Starting on the left of it, you've got the application, which is going to be the same for either preliminary or final. If that's staff review, which is going to be the same. And then you've got planning board review and recommendations, this is again for a preliminary plan. Then it goes on to town council for review of and approval of that preliminary plan. Remember back in that second, I showed you at the beginning, which is that colorful concept plan. That's what you need to be thinking of when you think of a preliminary plan. And then once that's approved, one of the conditions in that ordinance would state that. The advocate has up to five years, four years, two years where they have to come back through and get their final approval. And if they don't, then they lose all of their vested rights in that property. So they have up to two years, four or five years to come back, when they do come back, they're submitting construction level drawings. And that would actually be reviewed by staff and then the planning board would do final authority on that. Just like you do for major subdivisions of merchant property now, then they can go to construction. And then may elaborate on this in just a moment, but I want to walk you through the final plan. Process, if you come to the table and you've got your plans developed, you're fully engineered, you're ready to go to construction. You can start same process and end up with council's final approval and then go to construction. And we're very similar at the beginning, you have the application, you have a staff review. Then it comes to the planning board for review and recommendation, just as any other rezoning would. Then it goes on the town council, they review and they issue final approval for both the district as well as the construction plans. And that saves time from the developer's point of view, if they know what they want to do. And they don't need to go out and secure financing or anything like that, they're ready to go to construction. Why this matters is a couple of reasons, one, if you go with the first option, which is the preliminary master plan application. You still have to set up the district like you would for anything else. But the big advantage that that I've seen in the past from people who are doing project of multiple funding sources like grants or. Tax credit or something like that, is they need to show the granting agency that they have local zoning entitlements. A zoning entitlement doesn't mean that you're authorized to build, it means that your site is approved for say 100 units. And with this site plan. But it's not the level of we're reviewing stormwater calculations or we're putting a steel on a park now. It's just the overall concept. And then once they have that in hand, they can go back to their granting agencies and say, look, I've got local approval. Therefore, I'm qualified for your grant. Give them the money. But it also allows time for people to do further due diligence if they need to for properties. Sometimes sales are contingent upon project approval, so someone is able to show that they've got approval. Sales can go through and then it also gives them time to come back through at a later date with construction drawings when they're ready to do that. Might have a project that is at the preliminary level and they want approval. To go ahead to know that they can do their project. Once they have that in hand, then they can go hire the engineer and spend the money to get full construction level documents drawn. So it potentially saves them a significant amount of money by. If they come for the preliminary approval and they don't get that approval, then there's money to go on best. So that's why someone would go through the first option, just to get that preliminary plan established. And then they come back through when they're ready in time for the final approval, that would come through this board. So just real quickly on a preliminary plan, we've got another example from Brevard, those if you don't know, the Brevard for 11 years. So I have a lot of information to pull from. This is Brevard Place, which if you've been to Brevard the last couple of years, this is all on the ground now, there's a book out, bar of building. Little shopping center for Starbucks and also there is, I think, a hotel. This is a little bit above the conceptual plan because it's drawn to a scale and you can actually measure things if you wanted to. But they didn't want to go, again, they didn't want to invest in the full construction designs until they had approval by the city to be able to do what they wanted to do. And in that case, that included things like getting signals from the state. They hadn't worked through those agreements and that money had to change between developer and state. Before they're going to come back for actual construction. So this is that, that building at the bottom of the screen, just a zoom in version of it, so you can see their conceptual plan. And then when they came back through the final approval. Okay, so I'll change gears real quick. Anyway, so this is a building close up, just to give you an idea of what that preliminary plan would look like. And then the other option is if you come straight through with your final construction drawing, you're ready to go and crash financing, got everything else lined up. And you come to the board, staff, manual, council, council can actually issue approval. And they're looking at plans like this, so this is that same building, that same site, but this is signed into by an engineer ready for construction, so you can see. A lot of lines on there and all those indicate different callouts for notes for water lines, sewer lines, parking lot dimensions. Building size, all that kind of stuff. That's what basically Mike would review when he gets any other set of plans in the door for a commercial project. But this was done after they have a preliminary approval, it took them. Three or four years to come back for this, so they had the property, but whatever reason, they needed some more time. They had it built in and when they were in, they came back through, got their approval and now they're. Finished, complete, built out. So there, there are some allowances in the state law that we would include and this is included in this, I believe. For modifications to the final approval, once a project is submitted and they are ready to go to construction. But they need to change a lot of design or building layout because they didn't know about existing water line, something like that. That's to be considered a minor change that staff could approve. Anything above that though, we'd have to come back through the approval authority, so that's this board of council. Depends on the scale of the change where they are in process. As a text, once that happens, it's the same processes are very good text. So just in summary, quickly, it is rezoning, a conditional rezoning is just that. It should only apply to qualified projects, meaning lot size building area, something like that. It's a standalone ordinance that we would refer to. Once a project is approved, when they come back in two years, you pull out the zoning ordinance that applies and review the project accordingly. There are optional conditions, I mentioned earlier on about parking setbacks, densities that can be modified by both parties. And then there's a set of required conditions, those things like the ownership and stormwater. There's a couple of options. Uh, there's a couple of options. The town can adopt an ordinance allowing this, which is one option, which is you come straight through the whole thing. Or you have the preliminary or the final master plan approval process. And those two processes are not laid out in this ordinance yet. We wanted to come and discuss with people before we put that in here. That's all that I have for the overview. I'm happy to answer questions if there's specific texts you want to go over. After you address that.
Okay, so I actually do have a question. Um, just for clarification, I think I understand, but just to make sure that I do completely. Uh, when you were talking about the two options for for presenting. Is this much like when we were talking about text amendments? So if it goes, when it goes to staff review, that's kind of to get a feel for where staff stands, whether it's even. I mean, could staff at that point show disfavor in a project and then they would get the indication there's really? Why are we going to pursue this essentially?
Yeah, I mean, when when we meet with people. May Mike do an answer to that question? You you generally do that.
Yeah, I mean, I I would review based on the standards of the ordinance. And for conditional rezoning, I guess it would be the base district, whether it's industrial, commercial, or residential. And so sure, if if a developer came forward. Um, and let's just say hypothetically. Uh, had a development plan that was well below all our standards, I I may have a recommendation. Or conditions to be put in that rezoning ordinance to require certain things. It's all, again, it it's a different process, but it's all about making sure. Developments can be unique and innovative, but still meet the the goals of the zoning ordinance. And that's what I would.
We'd also look at the comprehensive plan. You have to get in that direction a little bit. And if someone comes up with an idea that. For the example that Mike and I were were working through today was building size. Um, because sometimes people just need a larger building. Well, the variance process is there for that for that purpose. What's to stop that person from applying for a conditional zoning district to fill a larger building size? That's a detail we haven't worked through entirely. Those are the sorts of things that need to be volunteered before you get this on the next step.
I do have a question, if you don't mind. Option one versus option two. Um, is that something that the applicant could choose if they come in? Don't have the final plans and want to go through the option one process. They're able to choose that, or if they do happen to have final plans and have everything ready to go, they could choose option two. Is that?
That would be up to them.
Okay.
We, you know, we might step in and and. They they give Mike a a concept plan and say, I want to go through the file approval. Like I'm saying, there's no construction plans here, you can't do that. You're going to have to go through either the. Preliminary phase or go down the drawing board and give us something final.
But if they didn't have the final plans, they could still go through option one and come back before two years. As soon as they have their construction plans come back through.
So so essentially, we are not designating that it's got to be one or the other. Those two options are always going to be available to any app.
I have one quick question, I guess. I was was in the council meeting and this came up. And I'm not sure I understand. Is this something that most of the municipalities in the state is already doing? It it that's what I understood you. It's not a state requirement.
No.
But most people already do it.
Yeah, and I should have written the numbers down. The school government did a study several years ago. And something like three hundred communities, I think, are using it in the state. So it's not everybody, certainly. Um, but it's obviously it's the majority of jurisdictions offer this as an option.
In a broad sense, uh. You wouldn't consider this spot zoning.
That's a very good point. It can be considered spot zoning. You didn't make that, you either have a discussion when these projects are before you in the future.
Yeah, but I think. Basically, the state's not in favor of spot zoning, if I understand correctly.
It's 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 not illegal, but it has to be justifiable. And we don't have any other real guidance other than that.
Yeah.
It's all context specific, because in Mills River, you could have a. A ten acre site that could be considered spot zoning, because we have several huge parcels. Uh, but you could also have a property that's a tenth of an acre. Um, but this is a resort, more urban setting, and that could be considered spot zoning. Very contextual.
Well, just theoretically, I'm just, you know, it sort of reminds me of what we just went through. With the last thing in the middle of the commercials on there. The last council meeting and they voted on that.
Oh, the the rezoning.
Changing and making that residential.
Right.
Turning that around. Uh, somebody come in and say, well, I have this three acre park and I have this residential all the way around it. But I won't. Get get a conditional zoning to real whatever. What about the people surrounding it? Are they going to have to say so in this?
Yes, it it would be a rezoning. Um, so everyone would get noticed, just like they would for any other reason. And we probably noticed that we'd letters sent to the property owners. Signs would be posted. Um, so yes, there would be involvement from the public to the search jobs.
That's why I, when council made that decision and considered that property, the spot zoning issue was brought up and like Daniel said. It's not illegal, but it could be challenged basically in the court of law. So the way to protect the town or council or whatever the decision-making body is from that is to have a steep statement of reasonableness. And the state, I think, has identified those four or five basically. Items that need to be considered or parcels that could be considered a spot zone. I don't know all of them off the top of my head, but you know, one is lot size, um, surrounding uses of land. Um, items like that. So as long as it's considered and in the minutes and. Our procedures that, uh, just like this. Planning board has statements of consistency, council for that decision had a s- a statement of consistency and a statement of reasonableness for this to protect them from spot zoning challenges.
One question on the page six or, oh, a lot size. Is that referred to the residential?
On line sixty seven there, the lot size?
Yes.
Um, no, it was not a residential.
So that I'm I'm presuming that tho- those are yellow because those are things like it says in parentheses are to be determined that that you guys would like some input on. Where we, what we think would be reasonable to be, what size parcel would be allowed to be considered for conditional.
Exactly, exactly.
Zoning and and this um, conditional zoning does apply, is it going to be in the categories of residential, commercial, and industrial? Like it says on page five, those are the three.
That's what we're presenting to you tonight. Um, we feel, we didn't want to call on next year's because there are issues on the district. Um, but that's up for discussion.
So would it be something like residential conditional? Or something where it would have the. The underlying zoning would be residential, but we would, there would be. Other conditions that wouldn't necessarily be in that, that.
There wouldn't be underlying zoning, if it were a rezoned, it would be, it's only staying on the district. But having it broken out as residential, conditional, district, commercial, and so on and so forth, allows. Staff basically to look at base district standards.
Okay, that's what I'm.
And apply those, again, like, um. We were talking about with parking, like if they didn't, if an applicant had no conditions around parking requirements. Um, I could basically look at it. Look at the commercial, let's say it was a a commercial development and look at basically the requirements for that and apply them to the conditional district.
Okay.
One way to think about it is, uh, starting with the base district and then working from there to. And to answer your question about the designation. Presidential conditional zones would be R C D, commercial would be C C D, and industrial would be I C D. So what is to show up on a zoning map is you would have your all your zoning categories. And then let's say this was not town hall, it was property. It would be some other color, you know, it would be labeled conditional district. Twenty one dash whatever. Um, that's that would trigger us during a planning review, in planners and editors of the future, to say, well, there's this specific history.
Okay, one last thing, the question I have. When the conditions are being decided, is that something that you all, the staff, would talk to the applicant? Come up with some suggestions? What worries me is, you know, if we, if it were brought before us and then we had to decide conditions. Um, you may not think of everything.
Sure.
On the spur of the moment and y'all are professionals can think of. You know, different things that might work and what they need, what we need as a town, and we could still maybe add something.
Right.
But.
So the way that that would work is is just like Mike does now with developers. They come in, they sit down, they talk about an idea, Mike gives them the basic outline. And they go back to the drawing board. In this instance, for conditional zoning. We would look at things like the ma- the comprehensive plan. And so they want to do industrial project. Um, we're going to look at the zoning district, we're going to look at the ma- the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. And say that some fair conditions for this site would be limited from no slaughterhouses or no whatever. And only do more sort of clean industrial, if you will, something that's research R and D. You could limit the number of uses. So, yes, we collectively as staff would present them with conditions. They would offer uh, other conditions. I don't like to use the word negotiations in a public setting, but it's kind of what it is. It's a it's a good way to look at it. As they're trying to look out for themselves and what's best for their project and our job and your job and council's job is to look out for. People in those river. Uh, so yes, just like we come with recommendations for rezonations or text amendments, we become with that kind of conditions.
Right, okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I want to say one, the same lines, knowing that adjoining property. Owners would would be notified of this process, I think is important because they may have additional input as to conditions they might like to see. You know, that we may not think about, you know. For example, like like we've experienced with Mills River crossing, you know, put a put an activity area in the middle instead of next to neighboring properties. They don't deal with, you know, it's things that we just might not think about unless those property owners have a chance. For input as well, so I think that's very important.
Yeah, and it can be as specific as, um, let's just take a rectangle. The north property line is abiding residential, would have to have a bigger buffer and say at the east.
But then once it's put in as a condition, it's agreed to by all parties. And then that's something that can be enforced if it's not done.
That's right.
Because it's part of the ordinance. Right.
I just want to add one thing real quickly. On the, on the building area size. Or scale, Ingalls is about a hundred and twelve thousand square feet, the entire shopping complex, not just Ingalls itself, but base, the doctor's offices. Then all of us, everything else is about a hundred and twelve thousand. Yeah. Um, Baker Roofing is about fourteen thousand square feet, if you know what that is. Um, the John Deere dealership is about fourteen thousand, Sierra Vias. Three hundred thousand, I think it is. Commingell Terrace is just over three hundred thousand.
Do we know like North Inn or the Lowe's Warehouse?
Lowe's is ninety thousand square feet, I believe. Amazon's about a hundred and ten thousand. I had a longer list, but I forgot it on the desk.
That helps.
But those are some, some, uh, the Van Waring and Greenhouse right over here. Um, there's, the one you see closest to the road is about thirty three, thirty three thousand, I believe. And one of the back is more than fifteen or so, not mistaken. Friday School is fifteenish. Old Rock is about thirty thousand. I believe. Blue, you know, building areas on that. Where footage is. Guy Herbs, if you've seen that new building, it's about a hundred and forty thousand.
So having you had an opportunity to even consider what might be a reasonable lot size to be considered for conditional zoning and. If you have and have a feel, do you want to share with us why you landed on that number?
Real, real quick, before you get into that discussion. I don't think that anyone has around us in the immediate vicinity of Andersonville, Asheville. The board has any sort of minimum standards to apply. The only standard we have in our ordinance as far as uh, lot size beyond just single family. Is for multi-family projects, you have to have at least an acre and a half. So that's, that's what we have.
Jeffrey, can you say something?
I was. Now I'm wondering, I mean, I can understand, you don't want everyone coming in.
Yeah.
But. You know, and and I was leaning closer to five, three to five. Maybe even four is, you know, halfway between, but then again, that's just a number.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what if? What if someone has a, we say four acres and someone has a three acre lot? It would really work well with conditional zoning. We don't want to necessarily, we. We'd have to change something then to allow that. We have to conditionally, conditionally. So, yeah, so you say a lot of the municipalities don't have a minimum?
Mm-hmm. Now, some places like Asheville, again, Asheville's unique because it's a totally different environment. But in certain geographic areas, if you're building in those, you have to go through the condition process. I don't think that we need that that level of detail here, but just know that there are other metrics that places use to force people into that process. And one thing I wanted to add about the lot size. Uh, you could always start with, say, four acres. And if we start getting applications for two and three acre lots, that makes sense. We could always come back and modify the tracks.
Yeah, I I kind of, I kind of felt when you start with something and just, you know, as we start to. Sample the water, so to speak, and and. Because it doesn't lock us into something, but if we just leave it as a free for all, we might. Be overwhelmed by what we get, I don't know. Y'all might be overwhelmed by what you get.
I guess this is more devil's advocate than anything, but if we, if we put a a minimum on it. And people read that in the ordinance, are we automatically blocking something that may be a good idea? That we'll never hear about because they say, oh, it's four, mine's only three. I might as well not.
That's a good point. Um. I don't know how much my answer, but I'll say that this is just an option for people. You know, they can always come under under regular zoning district. And if it works, it works. If they need a variance for a building size, they can apply for that. This is, this is really geared more towards unique projects that are specific to. Neighborhood or especially really large developments would be a good candidate for that, for this. Mills River is fortunate in that we have utility services that are not responsible for them. Um, so it's not as of an impact on Mills River as it would be for like Andersonville or the bar here in Asheville to maintain utility systems. Um, so you don't have to worry about capacity, there is capacity, uh, but that's not something that we have to. Plan for, forecast for additional usage. So it's, it's, it works well for very large projects, but it also works well for smaller projects that are. Uh, situated in a new situation, location.
Do you guys find a lot of times that when somebody has. A clear project in mind that they want to do, that they don't simply. Look and say, oh, well, the ordinance doesn't allow for that, so I'm going to forget about it. Don't they generally come use, okay, what, what do I need to do to make this work? So we would. I I just feel like if they really have something. That they're passionate about, that they're not going to just say, oh, well, I just got to forget about it. They're going to learn how to make it work. And then we would kind of know what's coming through.
You can speak from your experience here, but when I, when I was. Zoning, I was in the position of zoning ordinance part of high. Almost everyone who had anything commercial would call me before they submitted any plans. Um, saves them some effort, having to look up things in the ordinance. Um, but it also allows them to ask me, like, you think this is even reasonable? Is that, is that in your experience?
Yeah, usually there's an email or phone or it's a process. Again, if people do leave it, I don't care about it. I wouldn't know.
Very rare that you get a substantial commercial reconstruction without some sort of previous.
So what feedback would you like from us tonight? So we can kind of narrow down the discussion.
Well, I would like some, some feedback about the qualifying factors, the lot size and building size, if there's something else that you want us to consider. And then on the process, the two options for the process that we discussed, the preliminary versus final. Are you okay with two options, two options for one option? That's really.
Well, if I can take things out of order, go into the options first. The. To me, it seems like the only difference in the two is. Um, for someone who already has plans in hand, the only difference is the second trip by the planning board. So if they come to us the first time with everything ready, ready to construct. And we approve it, the second time, as long as there are no plans, we come pretty quickly. And they wouldn't have to wait two years, they might have to wait a month.
So, let me try to understand. Do you know if they have final plans, plan set, ready for construction?
When they come in, true, option one.
Yeah.
So they're ready to go. So, so option two would not be necessary if, you know, we only said, okay, we're only going to allow option one. So they would come in with final plans, we would look at final plans, we would give our recommendation to go to council. Get approved, and they would come back to us with final plans, which would be more of a formality since we've already seen them.
You wouldn't have to do that for option one. If option one, you came in with final plan, like a set of drawings, you know, everything. Um, and you went through staff review, paperwork, due recognition, council approval, council would be the approving authority in that instance. If you have all your docs in there, you're ready to go construction, which is, which is option two. Option one is if you come in with those conceptual plans, and then you have a view by everybody, this district is established. And then when it comes back through to you guys again, that's where you'll see the construction.
So the, the question is not, do we limit ourselves to one option? The question is, um. I mean, I like two options, I like having that. I like them with, with your guidance, choosing the option. I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that.
I'll say from my experience in Bravard, having a few options would be beneficial. Especially when you get, in, in Bravard, we were dealing with a lot of housing finance agency projects, which are tax credits. Very lucrative process and very successful program. But the process is two years long, so they would come to the town looking for preliminary approval, and they get that. It varies from project to project, but average review to approvals probably six to eight months. But again, that's much more complicated with you because they have a wire, so it's just a treat, so I walk to all my nerves. But then they would, they'd go to their agency and I got my license, I got my group, my entitlements, I'm ready to apply for my money now. And then when they were actually ready to go to construction, which they would only do if they were awarded those funds. Final plan, and we would review it just like we would do any other site plan. And give you guys with a list of recommended changes or conditions or something like that. So it's a little more hands-on approach.
Will be a time span, you mentioned, I think two years. Drag out more than two years, it'd be, I think, too difficult to keep up with everything involved.
Well, I thought that until we talked about Bravard place it took.
That whole project from, from beginning to end is probably seven years. The time they initially called us. From preliminary review, through the main reviser, preliminary plan, and then you have the district in place. Uh, so the, the final file, if you will, was issued in two thousand sixteen. And they just finished the hotel in the last couple of months. But, just like any other permit we issue, if someone gets a permit for a house and starts working on it, they stop. The permit's not on that, they have, I think up to a year. Yeah, actually started constructing.
Yeah, I guess.
So in the building permitting world, as long as you had your last inspection, I think, last year, the permit is still active. So if someone gets approval for a project, for example, three, four different buildings, or they start construction on one. Typically, they're, they're, they continue as long as they need to, as long as you're actively making progress on the projects. But that's a good point, that's something we should go to text about extensions, because we don't, this is a discussion, but. There's subdivision standards we have. You can get approval and then get one extension after two years.
Yeah, I was going to mention, since major subdivisions come before the sport, a master plan approval is two years. And then you can come before the planning board and request a single one-year extension.
So we could follow a similar, similar process for these types of projects. That they can come in at, you know, one year, three hundred and fifty-four days and say.
Okay, so let me put this out there so we can move through this. Is there anyone who disagrees with. Allowing two options for approval? Okay, so that looks like we're kind of leaning towards two, leaning into options there. And within such. Timeframe, and Mr. Oliver has proposed. Two years. Um, would anyone be opposed to having two years with the option of a one-year extension? At the end of that, or does anyone feel like it should be more or less?
One thing to consider. Two years in the, in this economy.
And I think about that too.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the challenge with these types of projects, is you know what you're going to get, but. You know, we can't dictate the private market, and we can't force adults to build, but this can be first for the town. So if you, if you limit someone to two years, it sounds like a long time, but it's, it's really not. You know, it's, if everything's booming and products are good, materials are available, you know, it can be that.
Yeah, right now, like windows are four months out.
Yeah.
For a house.
We were at a golf park for our parks department, and it's going to be six months.
But at the same time, you don't want to make it, leave it indefinite, you can have as long as you want. So.
I'll, I'll just say that I recommend that you start with two years within allowable extension.
No, no, my question, we can allow an extension.
More than one extension? Maybe.
Do we have to define the length of the extension?
You should, otherwise you're going to get all kinds of requests. You put some boundaries on it.
So one-year extension up to two, maybe, that'd give them four years.
Yeah.
But they've got to have a good reason. I don't know what we would do if it was halfway built. And they said, we need another years, now you're not getting a year, finish it this week.
Well, again, if they're actively building it. Their timeframe is essentially. Uh, if they don't get started within those two years, for example, then.
Getting started, if they're actively working on the project, then, you know, things can delay. Whatever, you know.
I'm comfortable with the two years and one-year extension. Anybody disagree?
Just to clarify, a single one-year extension or the option for two-one-year extension?
I'm thinking just that, since, since we're talking about getting started with construction, not that is actively being done with just the one, one-year extension.
I'll just remind the board that this extension is related to their final master plan approval. So if they get their preliminary approval. What you're saying is they have two years to come back for the final master plan approval, doesn't mean construction's only beginning. Means that they have to come back to the final approval in two years, so I'm kind of less clear. And then once they're issued the final approval, the normal building, you know, that's a good six months.
Six months is just two.
It's sorry.
It's hard.
But that's more of an administrative, to give them the permits. So, if, if they get their final plan approval within two years. And they don't get building permits, or they get building permits and they can't get started, and they can get another extension without coming up. Sounds good.
Yeah, because with labor shortages and, you know, yeah, I think that's something that's reasonable.
Lot size, building size.
Shall we go back to? Page six. So looking at minimum requirements, looking at lot size, building size. Let's talk, who's got some ideas? We've already talked about it a little bit.
I like closer to the bottom end of the lot size. Yes, or three, four, five, we're going to choose a minimum lot size somewhere like that. I could see four, I could see five. But if, you know, if we get several requests for smaller, then I'm also comfortable with.
Would it help to have any sort of land use analysis done, showing different acreages or. Maybe comparing these two things, a lot of three acres possibility of fifty thousand square feet or anything like that.
What, I would say, what, what the, what would your advice be as far as what seems more reasonable to. To consider versus not considering versus, um, is. You know, when we're into that good, you think three acres is too small, is that can open up a whole lot. But we're not saying that if you have a three acre lot, you could never have a conditional zone. It's just that right now, we think that the cutoff is. Does that sound?
Yeah.
Perspective, does that sound pretty reasonable?
It does, I lean towards the lower end of the spectrum as well. So I, I think it makes sense to go with three or four. Uh, but again, they could also have a project that has a building of two thousand square feet on two acres. So it's, it's not.
That's why I'm glad we can discuss.
Yeah.
When Daniel and I were talking, part of the reason we both leaned towards the lower end of the spectrum is. On the land use maps he was showing with the acreage analysis, there were the, you know, two commercial cores he highlighted. And parcels in those areas do tend to be smaller, so again, like. If we chose a five or 10 acres. It basically eliminates conditional zoning from a lot of those core central business, business district areas.
I would have no problem with three acres.
Can you show us the one?
This is three acres. So it's, it's most of town, you, you still exclude some properties along in the very center of town, like their intersection. But you pick up a lot of the. And I, I lean towards a smaller lot size, to my point of being in the core, because. Uh, there are projects that could happen in there. They have to meet the watershed standard, which is pretty strict in that area, so if you can provide some flexibility and something else. You might be able to make more use of a piece of land, because you can go vertical as long as you don't cover too much. So, just food for thought.
We have heard four to five. We have heard three to four.
I'll say three.
Three.
Two threes and. There you go.
All right, so it looks like the direction we're giving you is leaning towards the three. For the record, I'm a fiver, but that's just me. I'll go with the three. And you know, again, this is just, they still got to go through all the other standards, so it's not like, oh, if you got this, this is going to happen.
And you can, you can have an assembled of properties, like if you, you have property and. Think of all your neighbors and you want collectively sign on to the application, and all those properties can qualify and meet those.
How long, just out of curiosity, how long does the conditional use zoning last?
Perpetual.
On that property? But those restrictions last forever on that property.
Unless it's rezoned.
Unless it's rezoned at some point.
Yeah.
And that's, that is the beauty of the conditional zoning is that we don't have to speculate. Possible other uses that would fall under a re, just a straight rezoning.
Right.
Because those conditions last. And so we don't have to look at it and say, well, twenty years from now, since we've zoned it. Commercial, this could happen that we haven't intended, it's only according to those conditions.
So looking at, um, building size for both commercial and industrial, I will just admit that this kind of makes my mind go. To, to even think about, you know, the size of those buildings. And what could potentially be, be there, so I'm, I'm relying on some people who are much wiser than I am on this.
Clarify, Daniel, that's proposed building size.
So essentially, one, one of the proposals that you have here would be, it to even be considered this. Someone would, for a commercial building, the building they're proposing would have to be at least fifty thousand square feet.
That's right.
For industrial, it would have to be a really big thing.
Not that big, I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and again, Ingles is a hundred and twelve. We have to know, thanks, Mike. My continental test is three hundred and forty-seven thousand, my capital is two hundred and thirty-six, Guy has a hundred and forty-three, and Sierra Vias is three hundred and ninety.
Would they just have to meet one of these options? Is that what you're saying, the individual?
That's the way it's written right now, so it can be one or more, or it can be at least two.
So if they had three acres, they wouldn't have to necessarily have fifty thousand square feet.
Right.
But if they had less than three. The larger building may have some consequences that wouldn't fit under the existing zoning. That's a conditional zoning we could address.
Yeah, and for a, a building of fifty thousand square feet, you're going to need at least two acres, acres forty-three thousand square feet. So factor in parking and drive aisles and driveways and all other stuff. So, sort of. By default, if you're going to have a commercial building at fifty thousand square feet, it's going to probably be at least two and a half or three acres.
But with a smaller lot, say, two acres in a fifty thousand square foot building, they may not be able to get. Certain buffers in or certain things that could then be allowed with a condition.
That's right.
So that makes that two acre property still viable for a larger building, which, as long as it fits with the surrounding uses. And that's something the conditions can address.
That's right. Yeah, so you might, for example, have a, uh. What am I trying to say? A housing development geared towards median income, workforce housing, there we go. Um, that had a spot, the property owners give them a good deal on, but they can't quite fit it because. The setbacks or buffers or whatever, you, you know, workforce housing is one of the goals in a comprehensive plan. Council might be willing to forego some of those requirements if, if what they want to do. Council might be willing to forego some of those requirements if, if what they wanna do is meeting the goal of the copland. Of course, it's not a contract, so they may rezonate and have to consider all the uses of those. That's an example of how it could be used. If you remember back to the copland where we have the. The acceptable. Not acceptable, I forget what's in between. Categories, you might have a project that fits in one of those in the land use plan. Or land use map rather. And you want it to fit there, but it just doesn't quite meet the standards, you know, that could apply for official district. And say I'm trying to achieve all of your desired uses right here. I want to do that, I need some leniency, or I need some.
So, um, I don't want to, the, the type of development that was brought up during conference development was. The mixed use, where you might have commercial underneath. Above. So square footage would be going vertical, so you have square footage here plus square footage here.
That's one way to measure it. I was thinking more building footprint.
Okay, that, that was one thing someone just clarified. You know, are you just looking at footprint? Are you actually looking at usable square footage?
I had in my mind a building footprint, you know.
And it's a good point to make.
Yeah, I mean, that is an important consideration, because again, if you're going vertical, but you've only got. A, a small footprint, maybe 10,000 square feet, you have four stories, then you have 3,000 square feet of space. Which in some situations might work. This is kind of good, there's no way around it. It's, it's complicated.
Well, I think if we left it to where if it meant one of these three options. Rather than more of options, you know, two or more options, but would make it a little harder, but if it was one of the three. Then I think we're in pretty good shape, because 150,000 square feet, that's gonna be at least three acres plus.
That's right.
And 50,000, like I said, that's gonna be two acres, it's gonna be very small for that. And if it's building footprint. Then the impact seems to come from the footprint.
But it depends on the type of use that the building is. And, you know, commercial, for example, could have. A building footprint of 50,000 square feet, but they're manufacturing something that requires the high, high ceilings. But they only have a handful of employees actually showing up every day, whereas if you have a mixed use development, where you've got residents living there, plus retail activity. It could be less than 50,000 square feet, but it has, you know, twice the impact.
Sure, and, and the impact. I guess I was thinking the impact is on property, the impervious surface, the around the parking. Yeah, you can have a very small building that creates a whole lot of traffic, so you can have a big impact there, or it uses a whole lot of water. That's a big impact.
That's right.
So does square footage need to be specified in terms of footprint, or?
I think it does. I don't have a good recommendation for you. You might need to go back and look at some.
And, and which of those categories would, like a mixed use project fallen, or would it be the residential, the commercial, or the industrial?
Let the commercial, it's mixing of uses and it's retail. Even if it's services, like doctor's offices and residential, but upon a commercial category.
So, so after our discussion tonight, is this going to town council for discussion? No. Okay, so you guys are just gonna kind of tweak some of the suggestions and bring it back to us?
We'll give them an update next Thursday at their meeting. We'll present a text to you all. But it's not gonna be ready for their review, so you guys will.
You take the, like, the square footage with, in addition, the, the footprint, the 50,000 square feet or the other one. Should you word it that way? Would that work?
Say that again.
Add that part about the footprint.
Oh, oh, yeah, the footprint, yes. I think we should clarify whether it's footprint or go square footage.
Here's what I'm thinking, y'all can kind of correct me, because I may be completely off base. But I'm leaning more towards. Not the footprint, but rather. Square footage, because I'm, I guess I'm thinking in terms of mixed use. If you have. 10,000 square feet and you've got four stories, and you've got people living, that can be a huge impact compared to. 40,000 feet of a commercial building, like you said, that's just got a couple of employees, because, you know, maybe it's high ceilings, but it's not. The, the footprint. Of mixed use could be much smaller with a greater impact. So therefore, I think the total square footage might be. A more accurate. Representation of. Overall impact. Does that make sense? Am I way off base?
Yeah, I can agree.
Total square footage is, to me, is going to determine the usage. So if you've got four stories, I don't think we could have four stories. I think we have 138 foot total height limitation in, in, or something like that. So say three stories, but if it's a footprint of 50,000 square feet and three, that's 150,000. And they could put a lot of employees or whatever in 150,000 square feet to create a lot of usage on the outside.
There aren't any actions, right?
So we will, let you take that and bring us some other things back for this. Discussion minutes. There, would anyone like to make any additional comments on? The conditional zoning before we move on? Excellent, we will move on then. Our only new business tonight is regarding our November 2nd meeting, the scheduling of that, and I presume you're willing to know, because it is election day, if that's going to interfere with our meeting? Or, or not?
Yeah, if I do want to.
Yes, I'm talking with Daniel. I think we found out that 50/50 over the last couple of years, the planning boards be scheduled during that night, so just wanted to bring it up and get your opinion on what. Whether it's cancellation or.
Okay, so November 2nd is election day. The polls open at 6:30 AM. Will your ability to vote hinder your ability to perform your duties at the planning board that evening?
Not a problem with me, unless you have a meeting.
Okay, so I make a motion that we keep. Our meeting on November 2nd. Is there a second? Can we have a second by Mr. Foster? All in favor, say aye. We will be meeting on the 2nd. Okay, are there any additional items?
I saw a couple of updates if I could make a minute. We have a, a new text. A new website being developed right now, and it is, will be available for preview very, very soon. There's a few little tweaks that we're adding to do, to make it look better. But it will be a wholesale review of what we have right now. And one of the things that we're really excited about is. You can sign up, create an account, and get notifications of whatever you want. So if you want to know when an agenda is posted, when a bid's posted, when a job is advertised, you can get a text message or email or both. That occurs. We'll be able to upload agendas for the planning board meetings through there. Want to get notification, can. Get that in advance, and there'll just be a lot more information available. It'll be a little more interactive. We are where your tax payments online. And we also have some permit software that we're developing. Mike and I just had a, a long meeting yesterday with our consultant for that, and we're moving along pretty well with that. We've got. Like, it's hard to work, leaving this exceedingly long Excel worksheet for all permit types. We're gonna talk about code enforcement in a few weeks. So we should have that. At least our part of it wrapped up pretty soon. Along those same lines, we hired a part-time code enforcement officer yesterday. He'll be starting with us probably in the next few weeks. He's a downtown caller, his schedule is under commitments. And last night, the county commissioners approved the town's request to enforce the town's noise ordinance within the town. The deputies will be helping with that, and they also approved the town's request to enforce the county's. Animal control ordinance in the town, which they have been doing. But recently, there were some, some changes and they were, they were unable to enforce it for a period of time, but that's all figured out now. So that's. If you have a straight-up in your neighborhood, go for it and give them a call. They were always able to enforce state law, but there was some question about local, local stuff, but that's all figured out now. And then the other, I think that's all for the. In-house stuff. I do want to let you know that while I did the presentation this evening, and will continue to be in front of you for this topic. Mike is gonna be responsible for this more directly. So if you have any questions or, or comments or want to talk about any more stuff, Mike's your guy. I am, of course, always available. You're also residents in my house, also town manager, so feel free to contact me. I'm just trying to hand the tone off to Mike a little bit more. And he's, he's doing a fantastic job, so you'll turn great hands with him.
Okay, and one final word that I would like to, to mention is, there is a town council candidate forum coming up on October the 12th. At Mills River Community Center at 7:00 PM, so I would encourage anyone. Who is interested in our upcoming election to attend. Actually, tonight is the deadline to pre-submit questions for them. So if you have questions you would like them to consider asking, I'm not sure how they will vet those. You can email those to mrcommunitycenter@lowercase@gmail.com. All right. Time for the magic question.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Foster, a second by Mr. Oliver, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Didn't think so. You'll have a great evening.